Before you go, call me.
Yes, sir.
I've got somebody on.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Today is a special meeting of Commissioners Court. It is Wednesday, the nineteenth of September. It's nine AM. We are at the Grimes County Annex Building, 114 West Buffington Avenue. First item on the agenda is call the meeting to order with our invocation and our pledges. Would you rise and join me in prayer, please? Father, we thank you, dear God, for the blessings of this life and the opportunities that each and every one of us have. Father, we thank you for our health, our abilities, the opportunity to serve. We thank you for this great nation in which we live, this wonderful state that we call ours, and in this county of Grimes where we live, where we work, and we play. Father, we're so grateful that so many have desired to serve. Father, we just ask that we continue to have that togetherness, working together to take care of the issues that come before us and make this a better place day by day. Father, thank you for loving us so much, and again, for giving us another opportunity this day. And it's in your son's precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Would you be seated, please? Next, we go to our public comments, and we look forward to hearing from the citizens of Grimes County. If you do have any public comments, if you come to the podium, identify yourself and limit your comments to two minutes. Mr. Peter, did you? Oh, no, you're just gonna sit down. Mr. Foltz, you have public comments, please. All right. And once again, anybody with public comments? Seeing none, we'll move to consent agenda items number three, which is consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills. Consent agenda item number four, approved monthly reports submitted by the Grimes County Treasurer for August 2018, and authorized advertisement of affidavit of same in accordance with Local Government Code 114.026. And that's consent agenda number five, consider and take action to approve payroll. That is what is before us. Commissioners, are there any questions or comments? I'll move to approve consent agenda items three, four, and five as presented. Second. There's a motion before the court from Commissioner Malat to approve consent agenda items three, four, and five as second by Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number six, human resources, Ms. Lucy Pope, considering approval of modifications to the grade structure for Grimes County. Ms. Pope, would you? We do have that as attachment number six, and I do believe most of the attachments are highlighted with the changes that were made. Would you be so kind as to explain those for us?
Okay. At last, Commissioners Court, y'all approved to move the first assistant treasurer and the second assistant treasurer from a grade five. One was moved to a grade six. The second assistant treasurer was moved to a grade six, and the first assistant treasurer was moved to a grade seven. And also, it was brought to my attention, if you will look at professional ones, the juvenile probationary officers, at the bottom of the page four, it will say that salaries determined by district judges. We need to correct that. It's the juvenile board that does their salaries. So we need to make that correction.
Ms. Lucy, we did receive another attachment. You received another attachment that went along with this. There were additional changes that the court is not aware of and just wanted to... We're discussing modifications, so there were other modifications in the document, and I've forgotten mine, changes. But they included changes, I think, to grade number five. Some of the last sentence, office manager at this level oversees the employees up to, and that number changed.
So, part five, there should be no warning, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying, the original document...
It read grade, up to grade four.
Yeah.
It's been changed up to grade five. Because the idea, the thought there, Commissioner, was that, give an example, in county clerk's office, they would, when we made the modifications over there, and we split one, the head of that one area was five for real property, and then we had a grade five who was in charge of court. And the idea was that if the county clerk was out and said, okay, so-and-so is gonna be in charge in my absence, we moved, we made those adjustments so that they could then be in charge of both sides of the department. They could supervise someone equal to their level, but not above their level necessarily.
Okay.
And there was... Jessie Herrera is not in here, but I think, Lucy, there were three of those adjustments?
It was. There were three.
I know there was.
Different grade levels to the county clerk.
Okay.
And that was the reasoning for that?
Jessica. Also, ma'am. Also, number four went from, I guess it was less, that was a change in number four. And number five? Also.
Well, number four, yes, because it previously has said overseas employees up to grade three, but under the same rationale, we moved that up to grade four.
Okay.
So a four could supervise a four, but a four couldn't supervise a five. A five could supervise a five, and a five could not supervise a six.
Also, there were changes made to grade number seven, which included the auditors, and that has been stricken from this document.
Right. It was Jessica Herrera. The judge and I met with her, said that the district judge told her that they were to be taken out. Is that correct, Mary?
That is correct. Until the district judges have time to look over, since the Commissioners Court didn't want to... We, you know, didn't want the responsibility since the district judges set our salaries and stuff. The district judges have all the information that was provided to HR and to the Commissioners Court. However, Judge Kramer has got a capital murder trial. They're still trying to set a jury. And so he doesn't have time right now to look at this and read over it. So Judge Falt was in the meeting when Judge Mckagan said, as of right now, the auditor's office is not part of the grade structure until they have time to look it over and put us in the proper places.
I forgot my paper, Jessica, with the changes highlighted, so I was trying to... Okay. But when the document changed, we should have been made aware that of all the modifications. Because this is, you know, it came through Commissioners Court, and all the modifications need to go back through Commissioners Court, and we'd be aware of them. Because once I received the attachment, it was different from the report I had. So I know you did a lot of cleaning up on the lines and those type of things. But since the item was to discuss the modifications, then we needed to know what all the modifications are.
And you're right, part of it was a beautification process, so as we had snippets of what the job entails, we distributed where those jobs were on that far right column.
Yes, if you'll see, they line up, the descriptions and the positions line up.
Well, until she comes back, I know there was something also in line eight. It just may be cleaning it up to where the executive assistant lines up with the general admin and the PC tech lines up.
Right.
So it's just a lot of little changes that were made that we were not aware of. And since, like I say, we're talking modifications, we need to know what all modifications were made.
Okay.
You said on the last page, to change salary determined by...
If you'll see underneath the professional ones, the juvenile probation, our professional one has the three asterisks, and under that, underneath that, the salary is determined by the juvenile board, not the district judges. So that needs to be changed.
And if you scratch the district judge and put in juvenile board, that satisfies? Is that correct?
That should.
Well, it would. But you're gonna need to either add another asterisk to the county auditors, because I believe their salary, her salary is determined by the district judges. So she's a three, three asterisk as well.
Well, they removed them all together, didn't they?
Yes.
Yeah.
Should you remove it?
It's not removed?
It's not removed. She's still on there. Down at the bottom, she's still there. So we're gonna move the auditor assistant officers out.
Mary Nichols, you're outta here, considering.
Okay, so we should take our complaint out?
Yep, get rid of it. Don't lose our notes, because you're probably...
I tried to go back and highlight any of the other little tweaks or changes that were there on here. But you see all of those in the...
Sure. Thank you, ma'am.
Including the auditor's office. It's there. It's just gotta run through.
They did find one. Other one just...
Sorry, not here. Salary determined by the juvenile probationary officers, the juvenile board. So we're gonna change, and we're gonna take that.
I'm assuming that district judges are the juvenile board chairman or something? Because they're the ones that submit the...
They're on the, they've been on the juvenile board. I assume they will continue to be on the board, but Tuck is now taking over the juvenile cases, so he'll be...
That'll be changed, yeah.
Yeah, so he'll be probably the leading voice, but it's been, juvenile cases used to be before the county judge. Judge, are you still on the juvenile board? Have y'all met?
Yes, sir. I am.
Okay, so I'm thinking it's all four. Two district judges, Tuck, and you. And I may be mistaken, but I think everybody's on the board. And then the head of juvenile probation shows up.
Who were the four that met the last time the board met?
Which four?
The two district judges, Judge Kramer, Judge Mckagan, and Judge, our county court.
Right. You met with Sherry, right. You met with Sherry, with the head of probation?
Yes. Yes, sir.
And one other change, Jessie, that they talked about, I don't think we talked about, was the county auditor still on here?
They didn't talk about, the district judges only talked about our positions and adding them in. The intention is to put them on there. So they didn't talk about removing the county auditor. The district judges didn't. They talked about removing the assistants until they have time to review them, as to where they belong. So that's all that was...
So they were okay with the auditor?
They didn't discuss it. We didn't discuss it.
Mary, you're back on.
I thought you just said the auditor's office was off there. But I left it on check.
As far as I know, the ones that were on the review, the ones that we were asking for him to, you know, where they belonged was... So are we taking her off, or are we leaving her off?
It really didn't matter, because, you know, once the district judges say what they, where they want us, that's where we'll be.
For the discussion of today, we can, we won't take her off. We'll line her out like we've done with the auditor positions. That way, in the event, everything goes back as we currently have it. We'll take the lines off, and we don't have to rededicate the spacing and the verbiage, et cetera. Let's, if you don't mind, let's look at page one on this. The first change in modification, and Jessie Grove, you'll, and Lucy, if you'll both follow along, on grade four, you'll see that four is highlighted in the description that previously said three. So we had a grade four, or general men, that was able to perform the duties of a three, but also oversee. While, again, if they were left in charge, we felt it was appropriate to make it, they could oversee their peer. So we changed that to a four. You go to page, the second page, in grade five, the same logic was used there, where you see the grade five highlighted. That did previously say four, but it only makes sense to have it as a five. Then if you go to six, that's the change that was approved in Commissioners Court. And the definition was put in there, and then we lined it for second assistant treasurer. If you go to grades, and stop me if you have questions, as we go along. Grade seven, we've lined out the auditor's language. And we would eliminate that if the district judges demand it, or if they approve it. Then we'll put it back into that slot, or whatever the appropriate slot is. Go to the next one below it, still in seven. That's the first assistant treasurer where we made, we approved those modifications and have that appropriately stated and placed in seven.
Judge, the one thing that I noticed is that there's not any kind of description in there for the county clerk chief or the district clerk chief.
Yes, and/or is designated chief WDM supervises up.
Okay. Going to eight. Why did we, I don't recall why we highlighted, or why the general admin was... Why is that highlighted?
Previously, under general admin, it just listed the positions. It said these positions include...
So we broke them apart?
We broke them apart.
Okay, that's right. So we broke them apart for executive assistant and then PC technician? Because originally, it sounded like the general admin and the PC technician were kind of all in one, and they aren't.
And it just, it said executive assistant. It just listed out the position titles instead of having a brief description of what they were.
And that was mainly cosmetic changes. No verb changes. It's cosmetic.
Yes.
If there are no questions on that page, it'll turn then to page...
There was one more.
All right.
Under eight, you highlighted executive assistant, Roden Bridge.
Yeah.
We just separated them.
And before, in when we were reviewing it, we realized, it was kind of, it wasn't clear or easy to see that the executive assistant for Roden Bridge was included. And so, well, we also, throughout the document, we tried to line up the positions with the descriptions next to it. And so it was just added. Before, it was just, had to be understood that executive assistant was for the county judge's assistant and the Roden Bridge, the executive assistant. So it just was spread.
Okay. Then if we'll go to page three, there are no highlights in that area, but there were cosmetic changes. Again, lining up the right-hand column with the descriptions that are in the middle column. And then if you go to page four, we have noted that where you see the three asterisks down at the bottom, salary determined by district judges, for the time being, we're scratching district judges, and we're putting in juvenile board. Is that correct?
Well, do we wanna leave the three asterisks and maybe give a fourth for the juvenile board, since that one might be coming back in? Just scratch it with...
We could do that, but four asterisks for the juvenile.
Four asterisks for the juvenile.
Okay.
And just put a line through.
And just put a line through, yeah.
And then add the asterisk to juvenile board positions on top as well.
Ms. Herrera, would you be okay to make that change?
Yes.
All right. Are there any additional questions or observations or comments? Sir?
On the grade seven position, senior operator, I thought we had included a years of experience requirement in that description. Check, I think we specified five years. I'll check with Maggie right now to verify that. We talked about it differently.
I think you're right. I don't remember what it's on. Cause it went back and forth on the different...
I think the...
Is that your, is that your, is that a requirement that your request needs to be placed on that grade seven position?
Yes.
So, position is highly proficient in the operating of a complex and specialized heavy construction equipment?
Minimum of five years' experience.
Okay, so have a period there, and then we can put minimum five years' experience. And by adding that minimum five years' experience, does that still effectively fit in that page structure of the grade seven?
Yes.
Okay. And would that be consistent with lower grades and higher grades? Okay.
We had very inexperienced people wondering why they couldn't be able to be a senior operator already.
And that's one.
We didn't have specific language.
By golly, that was easy. Is there any further discussion? Anybody in the mood to make a motion on this?
I move that we approve the modifications that the grade structure has discussed for Grimes County.
That's second.
There's a motion before the court by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Walker, to approve the modifications to the grade structure, those highlighted, and also those that have been added, which would be in the grade seven R and B, which would also be the addition of four asterisks for juvenile board. Is that correct, Commissioner Dobianski?
Yes.
Okay, is that Commissioner Walker? Based on that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you both for all of your work on that.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda item number seven, Grimes County Sheriff's Office, Todd Green, considering take action to exercise a discretionary exemption from such pursuit to Texas Local Government Code 26... What does that little sign in front of the two mean?
Section.
Section? Section 262.024, 11, for vehicle maintenance and equipment repairs, see attachment seven.
This is just to be able to claim a discretionary exemption instead of going out for bids for vehicle repairs. This kind of gives us more flexibility on the number of shop companies and specialty and stuff like that. Since a vehicle repair maintenance budget does exceed 50,000, that encompasses everything, bodywork, AC, everything that generally one shop necessarily cannot do. So we still end up going to various shops to get our work done. So we'd just like to apply for the exemption, which has to be approved by Commissioners Court.
Mr. Foltz, you've had an opportunity to review.
Sure. We ran into this last year or the year before. There was some question about whether we had exceeded the number, and we hadn't gone out for bids. And we all looked at this section and thought, ah, here we go. We don't have to go out for bids. So it's up to the court whether, if you deem it appropriate, you can certainly take this discretionary exemption and say, they don't have to go out for bids. You could, on the other hand, say, we don't care what you guys want to do. You're going out for bids. And so it's up to you, but I think the explanation is, to me, is sufficient, but I'm not here to make policies. So it's up to you guys. If you saw that there were some shenanigans or something bad going on there, then you may say, hey, we need to go out for bids. We feel like the sheriff's office is paying some, you know, some person that they like a bunch of money, and this is a way to get around bids, blah, blah, blah. If you saw that, it'd be obviously problematic. Explain to your constituents.
And we do try to do as much of this in the county as we possibly can to the county.
Correct.
Kind of utilize local dealerships. Of course, in body repair, this AC work is a local technician out of Anderson that we use. Vehicle tires, as far as the mountain bouncing lines and stuff, we're having that jar as tire. That's also local.
So that addresses all of those departments that you currently, it's not limited to just one?
If we take action on this, does that encompass the whole county or just the sheriff's department?
You can limit it how you desire. You could make it open to everybody if you wanted to, that gets vehicle maintenance and repairs, or vehicle and equipment repairs, is how the statute reads. But you could. It's up to you.
Now, with that, most departments wouldn't use probably over 50,000. Did you say 50,000?
Yeah.
It's a per vendor.
Per vendor. But I was gonna ask Mr. Harry, do any in your department, since you have the big, large-ticket items?
Potentially, we could go over 50,000 on any one vendor, just depending on what breaks in a given year. But we go back to the vendors that some of us, you know, follow, depending on the ownership for repairs. We're not really, we're not bidding that out. And of course, we get our own mechanics for the hauler operations anyway.
And I think that was the issue that we ran into before, is one place couldn't do all the work, or one place was doing certain work, and another place was doing another kind of work. And anyway, it was just a desire to be able to get it done timely, I think.
Be more efficient.
Yeah.
Repair work doesn't end itself fitting out.
Right.
Do you wanna make a motion?
I can make a motion. I move that we allow discretionary exemption pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code 262.024 for vehicle maintenance and equipment repairs.
That's seconded.
Is that gonna be for the whole county or just the sheriff?
I didn't specify a department. I believe it's probably in best interest of the whole county to be able to conduct business however they...
And I would just say, it didn't really matter, but there's a little A before the 11, so we care about making it say what the statute says, section 264.024, little letter A, number 11.
So I'll modify my motion to include what County Attorney just indicated.
Yeah, no, you said 024 period, which was perfect, but if anybody's gonna write it down, I don't want somebody later to say, that Foltz, he didn't say squat when it was time to get the A right.
One more time, Commissioner Cox.
I move that we allow discretionary, the discretionary exemption pursuant to Texas Local Government Code section 262.024, little letter A, 11, for vehicle maintenance and equipment repairs.
Okay. We have a motion before the court on agenda item number seven by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item number eight, considering take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge's signatory. I see no change in where we're at. We lifted the ban and seemed to generate some relief to people, and I think we even have a little rain in the forecast again for tomorrow.
At the end of the week.
End of the weekend, so we'll let that, we'll take no action on that.
Judge, can I make a comment on that?
You sure can.
At the LEPC meeting yesterday, Mr. Lilly pointed out that to be careful what it is you're actually burning, because there's been some issues of people burning tires and other things, which is generally not a good thing, but just remind people to watch.
Actually, they're not allowed to burn tires at any time.
Yeah. That's not, it's not a county regulation.
They're supposed to dump them on the roads or something like that.
Judge.
Probably don't need to do that either.
We'll scratch, we'll scratch that from the record.
Twenty-fifth Amendment, please.
No, but we do have resources within the county that when they have tires and things of that sort, and paint, and we do have cleanup activities that are sponsored by the county using grant money, so. I only said that in jest earlier. Thank you, Commissioner. Agenda item number nine, considering approve the service agreement between Grimes County and a Chris Maintenance Agreement. I know I'm mispronouncing that. An authorized county judge's signatory, attachment number nine. I confess, the last time this was in front of us, that I hadn't taken time to read it. I've read it. Are there any insights or comments or stories of experience with this company?
Did you just ask for stories?
Information about this company?
I don't know that you're asking me for it. I wanted to point out a couple of things. The date at the top on the second page is September 1, 2017.
Yes, sir.
And the billing refers to seventeen and sixteen. I just want to be sure that that's our, that's the intention. You see, the very first page refers to billing from September seventeen to November seventeen, and then December all the way up through August of 2018, and the invoice date says November of 2017.
I spoke with them about this, because I said, well, you need to send me something with updated dates. And they said, no, these dates are correct, and kind of went on. So I sent it over to Jesse Murphy, who had originally looked at it, and I said, what about, what is going on with this? She says, no, you need to check with him, and they, absolutely, these dates are the way, that's the way it's supposed to read. Jesse said, go ahead and put it on there. So it doesn't make any sense to me.
So, did you address it on the first page, the effective date is as of September the first of 2017 for a twelve-month period?
Yeah.
So.
And then, but then it has in there for renewals, this is on, geez, I don't see the page number, but second to last page, in effect for twelve months, you'll have three one-year renewal options exercised by the customer, providing thirty-day written notice, and that's us. So I'm not sure, I was, I was unable to find our file, so I'm not sure what the last agreement, or when the last agreement was, or what it said. So I'm not certain on it, but just know that this is for the Vine Program to provide information through the county jail. It's victim services related. Corey could tell us more if we want to hear about that, because I've never used the terminal that allows you to access this. But you see, the fee is fifty-four hundred dollars a year, but I don't think it's paid by the county. It's funded by the AG. And that's how Exhibit A reads, is it's funded by the AG. We just have certain obligations to live up to, but one of them is not the payment. But I'm not sure how that works as far as the dates are concerned, whether they're asking us to make this effective retroactively, or we didn't pay for last year. I don't know what the deal is about that.
Mr. Green, do you have any insight?
No, I understand it's not payment. It's a program that's already. It's given to by the state. The state chooses APRIS. It's under contract with the state, so it's kind of one of the triple down effects. Here, it's a company that we use, and, but it is state required to have the services in place for the notification system. We do have the terminal in office tied in with our system, and does, but.
And the first page says, this invoice includes a three percent increase in the annual maintenance for fiscal year 2018. The reimbursement process noted below has not changed, and the Office of the Attorney General will continue to reimburse APRIS, or APRIS, or however you say it, APRIS safety on your behalf upon the completion of all appropriate documentation. My understanding is we've done this, my recollection is we've done this before, and it is to say what our obligations are as far as the use, and also what APRIS's obligations are to us, but it's not funded by the county.
Well, I read the big bold at the bottom of that first page, and, you know, I was encouraged by that. But still, when we start signing things, there's a reason for that.
Well, so how do we get it in our hands, I guess? As, I don't need to tell you this, but I've said it before. You don't have to grant everything that comes before you, and so people come for you, come to you asking you to approve certain things, and in this case, it is to approve so that we can have grant dollars, I think, so it's worthy of it. But I guess if you back up and look at it, the question becomes, how did it get in our hands, and who is it that's asking us to do it? Is it APRIS? Is it the AG? Is it somebody else? Okay. All right. I spilled my guts. I've told you everything I know.
On agenda item number nine, I make a motion that we approve the service agreement between Grimes County and APRIS Maintenance Agreement and authorize the county judge's signatory after reviewing attachment number nine.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number nine by Judge Joe Foul, seconded by Commissioner Chad Mallett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Walker brings us to agenda item number ten, considering take action to sell 0.0344 of an acre, being the south fifteen feet of Lot 18, comma Block 2, comma in the town of Anderson 2, and a budding landowner. What is an abutting landowner? It is. It was a short night. A little humor doesn't hurt me. Okay. It is expected that the court will convene a close or executive session regarding this item, as authorized by Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code. Deliberation regarding real property, see attachment number ten. I would propose that we do go into executive session. I would ask Mr. Walker and Mr. Foltz to remain for counsel. And pushing the button, it is. Ten.
Nine thirty-eight.
Yeah, nine thirty-eight.
Are you still on the East Coast from New York?
I don't know. I didn't go to the festival this morning, and I got out on the same day, so. I'm glad to be back. This is a nice place to be.
Thank you.
Bills weren't, I didn't get my bills paid.
Someone's tapping my chair.
I met the nicest lady the other day. Lady named Pam. Was it her son? Kind of nice chat with him.
Yeah. I knew you probably did, because he's a talker.
Good at sales.
Jamie texted me today and said that she was.
Sherry, would you give this to Mary for me?
Yes.
See, I looked at it online. I just watched the staples.
Glad you're back. Missed you. Call you several times.
Standing is, Mr. Waymire owns the property adjacent to it in his name, and so we've done the deed the same way, in his name. So it's not to Anderson Water Company. It's to Mr. Waymire.
I think basically all of the water company assets are held that way pretty much.
We've come out of executive session at nine fifty-three, after discussing, discussing agenda item number ten. Based on our discussion, is there a motion before the court?
I move that we approve the sale of .0344 of an acre, being the south fifteen feet of Block 18, Block 2, in the town of Anderson, to a budding landowner.
Rick Waymire?
Ricky.
Waymire.
Rick, yeah, could I ask you to, well, and his name is, on the deed is Rick, not Ricky. I've always known him as Ricky, but I guess that's his real name. But if I could ask you to authorize the county judge to sign the deed.
And authorize the county judge's signature on the deed.
Is there a second?
A second here.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number ten by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Walker, authorizing the county judge's signatory. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. That brings us to agenda item number eleven, a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn. Second.
There's a motion before the court, agenda item number eleven by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. It is ten fifty-five, nine fifty-five a.m.
Mr. Foltz, if I could speak to you a moment.
Judge, I heard there was some question about whether the video was on or off. Is it on or off now?